Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to open up the zoning commission's work agenda for June 13th. And hopefully, we'll have a pretty thorough discussion and get through some of the items that are on our list. The reason I wanted to do this tonight is that I know the upcoming meetings, we're going to be pretty busy with several major applications going forward. We may not have much time to come back and really work on these agenda items and think them through in enough time if we did not meet tonight. So that was the purpose of tonight, so we'd have that opportunity. What was your question? What's coming up?
... I can't remember when it was.
Right. I think Mr. Abansky has it. We have several. Jay, do you want to just give an idea of some of the applications you think are coming before I open up with the minutes and stuff?
We have 382 Perry Boulevard. We will be back. 955 Perry Boulevard. There's going to be a lot of old familiar faces. 382 Perry Boulevard. 955 Perry Boulevard. Boat showroom. They made changes. They're coming back. 27.
Well, just applications that are coming forward over the next month or two.
And then a text amendment. And...
James Farm Road?
No.
James Farm Road is not coming back? Ooh!
Not yet.
Okay.
You thought we were going to have some things in July that we're going to make meet.
Well, I'm currently being sued for it. So it's not on the agenda currently. And the only thing we have is a text amendment and development related in conjunction with the text amendment for Barnum Avenue. So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
But two of them are large.
Mr. Paul?
Could you share with us that recent legislation that was approved in Hartford regarding affordable housing?
We're going to go through that. That's on our agenda as well.
You're going to talk about that? It is on. Okay, good.
Yeah, I put that. We have a number of those kinds of stuff. Hopefully, it won't take too long tonight, but nevertheless, it'll give us, in my mind, probably one of the cleanest nights that we're going to have to be able to put our attention on things.
You're in the night without a coffee?
Yeah, it's the one night I forgot my coffee. We have to start off with the approval of minutes. I hope everybody has a chance to look at it. Is there any changes or is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I, Mr. Paul.
I'll second.
I, Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. For discussion, the 5.3 bedroom equivalency. We started to talk about that in some depth the other last meeting, as a matter of fact. We came away with several different thoughts of why we needed it, where it would help, where it might not help, why are we doing it? I think there was a call to look at more of a comprehensive study that came from Mr. Paul and Mr. Fuller. Is that correct?
Yes, a sort of broader review than just zoning.
And let Mr. Abansky answer. There's a couple of approaches we can do that, one, to do the comprehensive study would require having a planner or someone on the outside. The current budget, both budgets, I don't care who you look at at this point, right now, have reduced the planning and zoning department by $75,000, from which I understand is they've eliminated not only the planner, but any consultants that might go with it as far as all the education. So that isn't going to happen. We're not going to get any help. This is probably our last opportunity. There is one opportunity we could look at, and I think they're willing, is for the planning commission to take this up first and let them go through, because that is what they do, is look at that and then give us a recommendation from their side of you. Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, with some other text amendments that were wide sweeping that affected the whole town. It wasn't so much a comprehensive study as professional staff compile this big report with fancy pie charts and whatever. It was a steering committee with, of course, the zoning office being part of it. But you often had one to two zoning commissioners, one to two planning commissioners as representatives on that committee. But you had members of the electorate. You had, for example, assigned regulations is a good one. That was like a miniature version on how to do this, where the Chamber of Commerce was very, and this was when you were wearing your chamber hat as opposed to a zoning hat. Because they're the businesses, they're the ones that were most affected by it. So they kind of had the real world knowledge on what's appropriate for signage, what's not appropriate for signage, where is zoning been challenging, where has BZA been challenging in the past. So that's one way to look at it, is to look at integrating some of the community groups and some members of the electorate, because this is something you do want to take your time with. It is a big sweeping reform that's proposed, and it's still in its infant stages. So it's something, even though it might be tedious to take time, it's something you want to get right when it's finalized.
I think I would actually repeat your same words. The only thing I mention is that they were willing to pick it up as part of their over workload to do that.
Yeah.
And to sort of organize that message, because our workload will get heavier and theirs is less.
Yeah.
And in fairness, it does feel to them that it does belong more in a planning capacity, just like the TOD started off in planning. Mr. Paul, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I wanted to say that, and looking at the minutes of the meeting, it was indicated that we were supposed to respond in writing to Jay with our feelings and recommendations. And I think I was the only one that responded. So I wanted to clarify that the response wouldn't have never been made if it wasn't in the minutes. It seemed like we were supposed to respond. So I'm not trying to get brownie points. I did my homework and responded.
We'll give you brownie points. We'll give you brownie points.
I just wanted to mention just quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt. That this has been with the planning commission for the past eight months, and they're the ones we've been working on what we've put together here. And this is what they've actually sent you folks for a preliminary. But we have, this has been with the planning commission for approximately six months.
Yeah.
Just to clarify. This draft is the notes that came out of all those meetings, all the discussions that we've had about if it was worth fixing and how we would go about doing it and the rationale.
They're very interested in seeing this move forward yet. Mr. Paul?
That part of the process kind of confused me, because when we developed the plan, Conservation and Development, and being one that was there, the intent was clear, and it's even in the document that talks about, and I'll give you a couple of lines in the planning conservation document. Facilitate the development of high-density mixed-use structures in Stratford Center area according to TOD zoning overlay. Support development efforts to create well-designed affordable housing units particularly within mixed-use developments. See, it's like that's where we're going. We're trying to bring density back to the center. And I read your proposal, and it looks like we're trying to distribute density and infiltrate neighborhoods. And that's why I'm raising the red flag, because it seems to counter the intent. And this planning document is good in a way, but I look at it like, it's almost like the Constitution now, because it's subject to interpretation. And my interpretation is, we're supposed to safeguard our neighborhoods and keep them aesthetically pleasant where they are, and try to make sure that we, you know, build a community that doesn't disrupt what's already there. For example, the towns will preserve and enhance the character of its unique neighborhoods for overall community revitalization. These are the guts of this planning document. And as you start to talk about going out to put six to eight family homes in every just about location, I got to bring us back to this document here, and now we've got a discrepancy in what we're interpreting here.
I would just fund that that's current, six to eight, that's currently what they can do now, currently what they can do. It's just that we've removed this, the false cap, the cap for what's allowed. And I would just, I certainly understand the hesitancy for this, because at face value, it looks like, okay, we're opening up the floodgate. But that's not the case. The approval process is actually no different with if someone came in for a 10-unit development project today, or if this was adopted. Zoning commission still has the final say, no matter what. They could say yes or no. Just in regarding the POCD, I agree with what you're saying about density, and that is a goal for the town, to focus on the TOD and the town center. If you look at population and housing section, one of the objectives is to provide more rental, more rental, as well as homeowner-occupied residences, as well as Stratford should encourage developments that diversify housing choices in town. So I see the current regulation as limiting that section, yet at the same time kind of encouraging more focus into the downtown. So it's not that anyone is right or wrong. I'm just trying to look at as many, come at it from as many angles as possible.
We are at a point, as a zoning commission, because I know the planning has been, they have put this forward to us, for us, and they have put a lot of time, and they're willing to pick this up, and if there's more that we say that we need to have done, they're willing to try to shepherd this along as best they can. But it's really for us to decide if we're interested or not. If we're not interested, if you see this no benefit, then, you know, we can vote to not go forward on it. The reason why this is coming forward was largely because there were some benefits that came out of it that would alleviate some conditions, further take advantage of the POCD's mission without destroying our neighborhood. It's really up to us if we want to move forward. Mr. Fuller, is your thoughts on this?
Yes, Madam Chair. Not to say I'm not interested, but I do not like what was been proposed. But there's one area which I do agree with, the elimination of what I define as the school neighborhoods, where it defines the Worcester neighborhood, Johnson House neighborhood, which is, I believe, the second page of the proposal. Because that's not really how Stratford looks at itself anymore. The Port of Education has not really, there are no more neighborhood schools, for example. So I think, instead of getting rid of that, we should look at the actual zones, the actual land use zones, RS1s, RS4s, RS3s, and incorporate that into whatever future proposal there is, because that's more comprehensive to what would be an appropriate use or inappropriate use to a specific area. Because the Worcester, let's just say, we take the Worcester neighborhood. Well, you might have a lot of RS1, then you might have some RS4, then you might even have an LB zone if you go far enough to it down Barnum Ave. Well, all those come with different policies and different regulations. So I think we should really organize it, less by community, school, community, neighborhoods, and more by what's actually in the zoning.
Did I read that incorrectly? I thought we were doing it by residential areas, not LB zones or commercials. Did I misunderstand that?
No, it's all residential.
Well, then we should enumerate those in the proposal.
Except for the five.
That's what I'm getting at. It's because I do agree with getting rid of Franklin School, because we don't identify the town that way anymore. It's just not the way how a school district works, it's not the way how the zoning map works. So I do say I do agree with that, but I'm very concerned with just eliminating gaps. And I'll go on past president to explain why. TOD is controversial. We could all say that it is. Why is it controversial? Let's really get down to why. It was sold to the zoning commission and to other boards that is going to facilitate mixed-use development in accordance to the POCD. Of course, density housing comes along with mixed-use. It's one of the economic drivers that allows mixed-use to happen. It's why we are looking at revising the TOD. But what has the commission seen? And I'm not going to single out any particular petition, but all of them follow the same path. They were all full residential or very modest mixed-use, just to put in one unit that was mixed-use. So here is a policy that was written for one intent, and the actual behavior and nature has been another. So if you remove a cap, you're allowing a lot of unintended petitions to come in. And why is that dangerous? Yeah, the commission could say no, but as more and more case studies build up and the commissions don't set a standard, any future denials are going to use past president to say, well, 20 units was approved across the street, we're at 30, but the neighborhood says only 20. They're upset, they're worried about their neighborhood being trampled upon. A judge in a superior court or an appellate court could say, there is no fundamental difference between 20 or 30, from the bench, not from the local zoning commission or PNZ or BZA, who knows the people, who know the neighborhood, who know all those unique nuances. So that's why I'm very worried. Once you remove a cap, you're opening up 10 doors to the box. So we have, if you want to revisit what the cap should be, that's a conversation I'm more than willing to have. And I want to refer back to the POCD again. In addition to what Commissioner Paul has brought up about where density housing is targeted, mostly in Stratford Center, there are some other areas too, like with the adaptive reuse of the hotel we've turned into residential apartments. One, we have offered more and more diversified housing in the past 10 years. We've approved affordable housing. Assistant Town Attorney Kelly, in one of last year's zoning petition, cited that Stratford has actually doubled the HUD minimum standard HUD housing or urban development.
Ms. Peppin?
It was one of the affordable housing petitions. So in terms of federal standards, Stratford is twice at its minimum, so it is offering, in real-world economics, affordable housing. Maybe it's what I think it's lacking is not so much affordable housing, but elderly housing, quality elderly housing for a population. We are increasing millennial housing, which is smart to do, because that's the next group of...
We definitely need elderly housing.
And that leaves you something you want to incorporate into any sort of revision of Section 5, maybe ways to buttress or encourage quality elderly housing or diversified elderly housing. But there's another part of the POCD that is always referenced, whether it's in the overall goal, the land use and zoning goal, and in the population and housing goal, is balance, the strikey balance, and to preserve the character and nature of the residential neighborhoods. And it's very specific about the wording it uses. I'll just read in one section, and this is in the overall goals in Chapter 1, zoning section. It says, "Chapter 1, Land Use and Zoning. The goal of Stratford's land use and zoning is to strike a balance between residential and industrial slash commercial development that fosters economic vitality while preserving the character of individuals in the community." And there was another section that I found very important as well. Preservation and enhancement of Stratford's quality of life, which could be interpreted in many different ways, but it also means protecting people's homes. And there was something in your statement, Madam Chair, that I think are important. There is a certain area in town that's under assault by density housing. I think it would be more incumbent upon us, and more urgent upon us, to take a look at what that zone is. Why is that sort of development encouraged in that zone? And maybe we could fine-tune some policies specific to that to, you can't create a market, but you could catalyze a market.
Well, you can encourage and incentivize an area. That's what often zoning regulations do, such as the TOD was to encourage and incentivize without engaging in spot zoning. You try to come up with policies that sort of steer where you would like to go in terms of the vision of the community. I, I'm an open, I think a lot of what you're saying is, I don't want to speak, because I want everybody else to have a chance to jump in, is a lot of the similar feelings that we all share, it's just how we want to approach it. Now, one of the things that Mr. Fuller put on the table, which is noteworthy, is to maybe look at a replacement cap with some number. There may be other ideas. Not to take away from what Mr. Fuller's saying, I just want to make sure that I keep all options open, that everybody feels that they could jump in with a thought. I'm not trying to steer this one way or the other. Mr. Paul?
Just another final concern I have, unless I can think of something while we're sitting here, but if we modify Section 5.3, my concern also becomes such that there's going to be so many additional hearings and proposals. Not that Stratford has a lot of open space, but there's a lot, there's enough pockets of land out there where it's going to invite more developers to come in with more proposals, and we're going to be sitting here with a room full of people, and the neighborhoods are going to complain, and we're going to go through a lot of work with a lot of these meetings, and probably, from my standpoint, be shooting them down, because I don't believe we should be changing the aesthetics of these neighborhoods. And I agree with those neighbors that are going to be filling this room when this takes off. So we have to think about the impact of this modification, and not only to the neighborhood, but to this commission, because we're going to have, I mean, we've got large-scale decisions that we have to make here, and we're going to compound that now with the small development now that's going to come in here that we're going to have to listen to and articulate what our feelings are and come to a decision and vote on it. It just becomes more volume for us and more volume for you, Jay, because you're the one that's doing a lot of this work in the background. So keep that in my...
...point. A balance of a lot more work for ignoring something that might be somewhat beneficial but not right. And that's kind of what I'm wrestling with myself. So, and I'm trying not to be salesy or to convince anybody of anything, and you obviously know that I feel that it should be changed. How, I mean, this is what we thought was going to be the most comprehensive approach to it. But, you know, going back to what we were talking about, balance, what Commissioner Fuller mentioned, and he's 100% right, balance is something that needs to be achieved. I think that, well, just looking at the housing demographics for the town of Stratford, we've got 77% single housing, a little bit over 25, a little bit under 25% for rental opportunity. That's less than half of anybody in Fairfield County and less than half of anybody in the state. So I think when they're talking about balance, I think they were actually talking about it the other way, that we need providing more rental opportunities in town. I agree. Balance protecting your neighborhood. Now, if you don't want a single-family, three-acre neighborhood to be bombarded with 30-unit development projects. But absent this cap, go back, rewind three years, three years ago, and that's exactly what we've done anywhere in the county. So it's tough, tough.
Now, I will comment that, for the time that I've been here, if there's a way for a developer to come forward with an application for something, they will. That the regulations that we put in place don't necessarily stop that volume. It may direct them on how they approach that application, but it doesn't, unless we clearly say, you cannot develop here, and it's off limits, they're creative enough to find a way to do so. I'd like that balance concept of, okay, if we understand that you're going to do something, let's see how we could do it that doesn't destroy the character of the neighborhood and gives the kind of solutions that fit our demographics. I mean, one of the things, and Mr. Fuller kind of hit one of the things I'm really close at hand, there are not enough housing for seniors, not senior housing as in they're not disabled or housing, but people who want to downsize into something smaller, more affordable, more livable, but don't want to lose their community. We have very, very limited aspects and options for those things. If you don't mind, I'm going to let Ms. Peppin, because she hasn't had a chance.
I feel that in this economic time that we have, we've been getting a lot of, you know, apartments and condos and that kind of situations. Because if I hear one more time somebody saying to me, you didn't approve that, you know, X amount, I'm like, well, that's what, and I think, I think that part of that is because of the times. And I think right now, developers and owners of property are trying to get the most out of their money. I mean, so, so I agree, I agree with Commissioner Fuller in that, I think if you lift the cap...
Would you be comfortable, and this is what I'm, would you hearing me try to do is find a consensus? It's like moving, trying to find that right level and help people find their thoughts. Is there an interest on looking at a cap or, you know, putting a cap on, putting more units, seeing how it feels, taking more baby steps along the way? I'm trying to get some, Mr. Rukuska's jump in here too. Or do you want to like, no, this is just too far for us to go right now? That's what you see me trying to do, is find that point where there's some consensus of, as to how we move forward, so we don't keep talking about the same thing over and over. Oh, Mr. Fuller had his hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Before I answer your question, there's another food for thought we should also consider when we're looking at this. What works for Fairfield works for Fairfield. It may not necessarily work for Stratford. So a 50-50 balance may actually be an imbalance for Stratford. And I would also challenge the numbers that our housing may not be 75-25, with a lot of recent apartment applications coming in, maybe some in-law and accessory apartments also coming into play. So we might be seeing a 70-30 or a 65-35, because the trends are going one way. You also have to consider what the Stratford housing market is, and why do people choose to buy a home or rent a home in Stratford? Sure, our taxes are high, but there's a flipside to that point. Property values are affordable relative to Fairfield County and relative to other shoreline communities in the state. It's much easier to buy a house in Stratford than it is in Shell or Fairfield. I know I looked at the market myself. I have two properties, I'm looking to get rid of one at some point inherited. It's just, it's a particular goose parent, it's what happens. So it's, but that's why people also choose to move to Stratford too. It is an entry point into the shoreline of Connecticut. So it might be appropriate that our balance is 70% housing, or single-family or two-family homes. And I consider two-family homes in the same vein as I consider one-family homes, because it's still one structure, it's still one house-looking structure. Maybe, you know, an in-law is really a single-family home with an accessory on it, though they get double the WPCA rates, but that's up to them. But that's something also we need to consider before we really, we need to define, what is the balance? Is it 60-40, 70-30, 65-35? It's, it's different for each town.
It does. I don't know without a better study. I don't think we know. But can I dovetail off something you said, and only because I'm trying to move us along? The idea of a cap or inching ourselves away with maybe a small amount to see how that performs, and then, of course, the next zoning board could make some adjustments to it, I'm open to. But I'm more open to it because I would like to see it more directed in residential neighborhoods and more focused on encouraging housing for over 50, for people who are trying to downsize. Now, I don't know how to do that, okay? But that's something I'm very, that's our speaker system. Now, Mr. Paul, and then Mr. Julian.
I picked up on, you know, the thought of trying to do this in a kind of like piecemeal way of, you know, migrating towards an end state, if you will. Again, the concern I have is, although well-intended, if we start to piecemeal this and try it out, my concern is that we haven't taken a step back and looked at this thing holistically. What is it going to end up looking like as we piecemeal it? So I'm for doing a holistic step back and take a look at what we're trying to do, and then put together an action plan that gets us there, rather than piecemeal it without having an end state of what we want to see. So I'm recommending that we look at this thing from a holistic standpoint, rather than a piecemeal standpoint.
Okay. And that would mean specifically, we do what?
Well, it goes back to, this commission can't do that here. I think it goes back to where Commissioner Fuller mentioned last week at our last meeting, is that we may have to put together a... have to put together a task force that will focus on this in a more holistic approach for a comprehensive solution. And it's a more dedicated approach rather than a, because this is brainstorming here, but it's not going to, it's not going to put the solution together. I think we need a task force that's got to take a look at this.
I don't think the task force was taken off of the table. It was more like giving the task force some direction. If I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fuller, I don't think we said we weren't doing the task force. It was a matter of direction.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify for a moment. Yeah, I think it was, we're just trying to figure out what sort of components we would want in the task force, what sort of direction we want to give it. There's something the task force would be, because this policy will touch more than just planning and zoning. Touches conservation, economic development, touches Health Department even, education. I'd like to see the Board of Ed chime in.
Right. So, I think it still includes those elements. They're not, what I'm trying to do is, tonight, quickly, soon, if we can move towards something that's decisionable, that would be great. Mr.?
I just wanted to add one thing. You know, I've thought long and hard about increasing the cap by 100, 50, 200 units, and I've talked to a lot of people, and I think that might actually be the most dangerous thing for us to do.
Oh.
Because, not dangerous, I mean, that's a bit of an exaggeration. But I think, once you put a finite number on it, everyone's going to say, "Oh, my God, I got to get in the biggest, quickest application I possibly can." That's not well-thought-out, as opposed to something that's, okay, now it's allowed, now it's allowed in these zones, same way it's always been. And I think you might get more, a more measured approach to some applications, and it won't be just the absolute floodgates have opened. So, that, I totally respect taking more time and maybe setting up a committee, but I would recommend against extending the cap.
Another, another thought? All right. Let me get some folks. Mr. Giuliano, what's your thoughts?
Well, it just took away my cap thought, that's for sure. I, you know, I was kind of like trying to stay with some type of a couple of more on the cap, you know, not to go to 200 or 300 or 50, maybe a little less. It's tough, because you have builders out there that want to do more units. It's all about the dollars. I mean, we're trying to play God here, I think, in some sense of time. I mean, you know, I read, I went over this document a million times. I got it all hashed up and everything, and it's like, we're going to be God. Like, somebody's going to come up in front of us. You want to lift a lot of this stuff, okay? So, now you're going to come up and we're going to be the ones, yeah, you know what, that's, we're going to go back to special cases 20.2, 20.21. Yeah, it's like we're making up things as we're going along. And I think right now, it's great what we're doing, and Mr. Fuller has a ton of stuff there, as monks as everybody else, and I really think we need to just pull back the reins, and we really need to think about this some more. I mean, Jay just got me on that cap idea. That, I was really leaning for a cap.
I might be wrong. It might be the perfect solution, and I'm wrong all the time.
I have, I just have one more thing. You know, on the cap thing here, it's 600, and, I mean, that's been there since, what, 19, how long has we've had that 5.?
1965, I think. I think that's the reason why you're seeing any development that has an opportunity to develop a residential, that TOD is perfectly, that's why it's straight residential, I think no one's made it to 20 years.
And then, I just, one other thing is that you mentioned earlier, though, was, just bear with me here, you said the 5.35. You definitely want to get rid of that on the 5, you said the 5.35. So, in your draft, everything that you see in your draft that's got the line through, and it's going back to what I was saying, we're going to be playing God, we're going to be going back to special cases, and so on. So, I mean, I could understand some of this, getting rid of it, because it is confusing in some sort of a way, unless you haven't been doing it for 20 years. So, that's my take on it, and I, I really would like to spend more time doing it and getting something down for us.
Let me bring Mr. Raguskas in here with some thoughts, and then we'll try to come to some resolution as to how we want to move forward.
Well, I do think that the fact that you're keeping the units per 40,000 square-foot restrictions is a good thing. That's going to keep it from getting too dense anywhere. And I think what Jay said is accurate, that if we put a, any kind of increased cap, that will just be a shark attack of people trying to get in while they can. So, but I also agree with Commissioner Fuller that it could just be, no cap at all could, there's no control then. I mean, there is control. The zoning commission will still hear every case, but I think that the idea of having a group of people that focus on this item and sit and discuss it and really fine-tune what we're trying to do is the best way to go.
I'm going to make some best attempts to consolidate some of your thoughts. Bear with me and come up with some suggestions, and you can tell me yes, no, how we might want to. Let's start with the idea of a group of people looking at it, of some compilation of people, right?
Planning and zoning.
Planning. We'll put a list together with everybody, okay? Just assume everybody who should be there. Do you want it run out of the zoning commission, or do you want that group task force, the terminology task force, run out of the planning commission? Let's start there.
Since residential is very much a, well, you can make a case for either way. It really depends on how you look at it. If we're looking at a policy, zoning regulation, it should be the zoning commission. If you're looking at a broader town planning aspect that eventually becomes a zoning regulation, then it's the planning commission. So, it really comes out, are you thinking down the road, or are you thinking much more of an immediate zoning change, text amendment?
My, my thought, listening to everyone, is a little bit more comprehensive down the road, not something in the next month or two? Jay, did you have your hand up as a thought?
No.
Okay. If I understand, everyone...
Gee, I go play.
Nobody have my hand up. That was me.
So, I think to put the kind of deliberation and careful thought into this that has a more broader, longer range in process, that will become a zoning regulation, I tend to favor the planning commission to being a little bit more in that capability of looking at that and having more of the focus on that than we do that tend to look at application and more immediate needs. But that's just my thought.
Just to, just to add on that, zoning is much more of a judicial board, where planning is more of a long, quasi, I mean, we do have legislative powers, but planning is like more of long-term legislation. Where the planning commission might also be beneficial to be kind of the steering agency, if you will.
We're talking about?
Is, this is more than probably a zoning regulation that we're looking at. We're looking at a housing plan. Since the housing partnership is really defunct agency, it hasn't, I served a term on it, and it never met, and my term expired without ever meeting.
That's not helpful.
That's not helpful. I was from 2011 to 2013. It never met once, it hasn't met since, and I don't think it met three years before that point. So, this is something that, that could have been taken up by the Stratford Housing Partnerships. On this commission, you probably want, would want some sort of member of the housing authority to have some sort of representative or delegate present.
It's really your comfort level of which commission do you feel should be the steering commission? That's really what I'm asking. Do you want it to be part of our work agenda? We still have the same group of people, assuming all the same people are there. But, Mr. Baske?
I'm just going to have a suggestion. Since you folks are the ones who are actually going to be voting on these, I think it has, there has to be buy-in here before it goes anywhere else. That's just my different thought. I think the planning commission has valid to have them drive it too, but...
Why does it have to be one or the other? Why can't it be on both agendas?
It could be on both agendas. Usually, one commission, though, sort of shepherds it. And generally, there's the people who are on it motivated, who are motivated to do this will shepherd this along. Mr. Paul?
Right within the PCOD, under steps regarding land use and zoning, there is an action step passed that talks about update of town of Stratford zoning code to reflect the future land use plan that will provide for the increased development opportunities in appropriate areas, protect the character of neighborhoods, and maintain the town's important waterfront and open space. The responsibility in this plan is planning and zoning.
That's correct.
So, let's just call it what it is. Designing and zoning, that takes the ball.
Both commissions wrote a letter, and both boards voted on that very same language, that very same paragraph, to ask for funding to help us accomplish that. That request was denied both in the budget and on the capital, so we know that it's not going to happen for the year going forward. But, good thought.
Is it possible to apply for grant funding?
For this, grant funding, Mr. Fuller's asking?
For specific planning projects and research and...
It's possible, I suppose, if you have somebody who's going to do it.
I've been looking for grant funding for zoning regulation, the rights, since I started it, and I haven't been able to do any, I haven't been able to find any, and that's kind of why we're going to...
Any corporate partnerships, which could get, you'd have to have a code of ethics and memorandum of understanding that it's not to benefit the corporate sponsor per se, but maybe of an attack's write-off. But, you know, maybe a business community, well, maybe could underwrite it. I'm not sure. This is something the New York State's doing. They're looking at a lot more public-private partnerships at the state, county, and village. They don't really have towns, they have villages. We're, you're looking at municipal and county-wide projects with some sort of private sector underwrite to it, to kind of take a little bit of the burden off the taxpayers. I'm asking something that's probably even larger than what the zoning commission's purview is, but there might be a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel if we're looking at augmenting planning, zoning, and other...
It's just something that we don't know right now that we have or can get. I'm a little concerned, honestly, the fact that the funding for our existing, our existing funding in the planning and zoning department is going to be removed. That really worries me. And not that I'm making that the issue tonight, but we've had someone helping Jay for the last few months work on some of these major work agendas, which I have no idea what's going to happen when that funding is removed. Obviously, it may stop. So, I don't want to overcommit to something that I'm feeling uncomfortable about right now.
Just to dovetail on that, when Gary Lorenz retired, he was also retained as a consultant, and then his funding dried up. So, the work he was just starting on during the transition came to an abrupt end, and I imagine Jay and the rest of the office had to jump into the deep end right away instead of having the soft transition from some of the projects Gary was working on at the time. Another opportunity might be looking at internships. There's a lot of good graduate programs out there where, where students are looking at, to get their feet wet in the planning and zoning matters, or economic development matters. So, maybe reaching out. I could make a contact with Fairfield University, but I think UConn would have a...
Nope. State of Connecticut, isn't that sad? I have actually tried to start one.
Really?
There was an urban studies program at Southern that was disbanded six years ago.
Is there any, any of the MPA programs, master of public administration programs of a track in that?
Oh, that's scary.
That there might be. Yale has a forestry program. They have one urban planning class. That's the only urban planning class taught.
How about the New York City area? I mean, it's something that...
That there's hundreds.
Okay. So, let me try to just bring this back around circles.
I'll talk to you offline about a lot of that.
Let me take a temperature. How motivated is this board about looking at 5.3, given all the comments? We certainly can just say, table it, do it for another time, we're just not ready for it now. Or are you motivated to jump in here? Are people in this group who want to jump in here, be a part of this task force, to really drive this?
I'm okay being part of the task force, as long as we're very slow and methodical and comprehensive in how we go about it.
Okay, I got one.
That's the only caveat I would put on that.
Okay. Well, that's one yes. Anybody else?
I agree.
Two yeses. Mr. Paul?
You know, I'm for the task force, but, you know, the question is, as we just talked about, funding is the issue. So, subject to funding, if we get funding, we can get a task force, because you need some kind of a consultant oversight to manage and move it forward. And that's the piece that's going to cost us.
That is a very big piece.
Why does it need a consultant? I'm just...
You don't need, all right. So, Mr. Raguskas?
I guess I didn't realize that for a task force, you needed to have a consultant, a paid consultant. I thought there have been a lot of task forces that are more community-driven, and Jay would be our resident expert. So, don't give me that look.
I was thinking of like grassroots-oriented.
Yeah. I think internally, yeah, I think internally, we're tapped. I think that's what I'm hearing. That's why I'm thinking. The consultant's really the person, I'm using the word that maybe would, should be using a coordinator, but it's got to be a resource that may not be currently in the budget, which means we've got to either get a grant or some way of getting some kind of funding from somewhere to kick this off. Then that becomes the task force, and then we move in that direction, then I'm on board.
Okay. If we want to do a task force, I think that's a great way to approach it. There's a couple of people who sound like they're interested. We could look at modeling it the same way the Greenway Committee was put together, right? We also could take a more slower, methodical approach. We've got a lot on our plate right now. We might not really put a lot of headway into this until after the summer, when we can see a little bit more of what happens with the budget. Those are things we can do. And we can look at working with the planning commission so that it will be a, just like on the Greenway, it's a joint effort. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, just a point to note, this is going to like start up in the fall. I only have three months left on the commission, then my term expires. So, at that point, I would just ask to be a member of the electorate, which then would free up a slot for, there's four zoning commission seats up in November, so you're going to have a fundamentally different board. So, it frees up the whole zoning commission to kind of reset and relook at the issue at that point as well, while the steering committee kind of, in those few months, sets up goals and vision and kind of, what is it looking to actually do, and how to achieve it?
Absolutely. And to some point, the next zoning commission may look at this and say, "This is too hot. We don't want to do it. We don't have enough support. We're not going forward." That is very well possible. I mean, this is a big project. And I do want to give you the choice and acknowledge, you don't have to do this now. You know, we could just table it and say, "Okay, let's revisit it in September." So, no one should feel pressured that this has to come forward. It's just an idea for us to start to think about.
How about a baby step? Let's just think about the task force.
Okay.
What is its parameters? What are we looking to do with it, and how are we going to be looking to implement it? So, I think that's something for the planning commission to also take a look at in their next meeting or two on maybe stuff we have, might have missed in our discussion tonight.
Okay. I, I'm, I'll be, tell you where I'm personally leaning towards. Because there's so many ifs, and I really am not getting the sense that anyone here is jumping out of their chair to say, "I really want to do this." I'm quite willing and comfortable to put this on a back burner until the fall, and then we can reconvene and look at our work schedule then, and then say, "Okay, do we want to do the task force now? We have a little better sense of what our schedule is like," and pick it up then. We do have a lot to do. So, unless somebody's really kind of feeling like, "I, I really want to do this," just don't jump out of your chairs all at once.
I think, though, if we start the task force in September, and two of us are going to be, at least two of us are going to be gone, right, Dave?
Yeah, we're the ones with the expiring term, so we're, we're definitely out.
Yeah. I mean, like you say, maybe you'll get for...
My term's up.
Your term's up, too?
Honestly, it'd be true. You could go for it again, but... Honestly, it'd be true, you could go for it again, but you know, that's...
Just about everybody on, everybody on this board is gonna be re-elected, or is going for an election, so it could be a whole different board for all we know, which is why I'm asking, do you wanna jump in and start something now, or do you wanna look at it again? Mr. Fuller?
You know, I think that, you know, we're probably talking ourselves out of moving on this, because if we're all gonna get replaced, then you got a new mayor in that's gonna realign the resources anyway, and we need to work with that alignment, then we may be better off waiting to let the dust clear before we start entertaining this magnitude of a project.
Anybody else? Mr. Rieguskas, I didn't mind?
That's a good point by Commissioner Paul. If we started in September, it's only gonna be partially done before the commission has a totally new makeup, it might make sense to take this on, the fresh start.
I'm actually thinking whether we start it now, or start it in September, if we have a busy summer, and you're trying to meet over the summer, I don't know how much will actually get accomplished, especially when you're trying to bring in people from other disciplines.
And we're still kind of up in the air on what we're trying to accomplish, too.
So could I make a recommendation that we just table this, and relook at it, or we can strike it and bring it up in the next commission, if whoever's here?
To your earlier question, with everybody else, I'm all for this, like Jay's drafts and everything, I mean, he really did a...
He did a great job, yeah.
Great job over this.
At least to start the conversation.
But what I'm trying to get at is, I think before we do all of that, as long as we have enough of a foundation down before we put this on the back burner, so whoever comes in has at least the foundation there, I mean, this is probably the foundation right here, I just wanna make sure that everybody, or I'm understanding that right, that this is a good foundation to start off with.
Is this on the planning commission's agenda at all?
Not anymore. Once the document got drafted, it went off the agenda until it was discussed here, and to see if it made out of, made it out of here.
I think we should at least put out kind of the goal, like, what a task force should consist of, and what it should do, and then have the future commissioners adjust it from there, or if they wanna choose to abolish it, that's their prerogative as well.
How about this, so we can move along? Just on that one narrow point, so we can make a decision, would anybody wanna volunteer just to put together who's on the task force, and maybe a skeleton outline, and go from that? How's that sound?
I'll take a look at that, because as the chairman previously, a couple of task force were created for a couple, I kinda know like structurally what...
Yes, you do. And you have a good policy background.
So I'll give you like a week or two to kinda draft it up, and I'll put something right into the commission, or I'll also send it to the planning chairman as well, Chairman Shavitt.
I think that's an excellent idea. I would like for this to stay on our agenda, so that even the next, as we move forward, and the next zoning commission, they also will see it, so it doesn't get lost. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just gonna ask.
And move to goal settings.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if we can keep this on there, and just keep bringing it up at our...
Before we move on, I just wanted to add, you know, this isn't an easy thing to propose, it's not easy to propose something that you know is not gonna be very well received, but I did it because I think that, you know, it is at least the right direction, whether or not this is the end solution or not, so I just wanted you folks to know that.
Yeah, but doesn't, don't you think that 1965, we need to be doing this? I mean, our situation in town has changed maybe just a little since 1965? That's a joke? All right, I mean, this should be going on, and like I just was asking just about 15 seconds ago, we should keep this on the agendas, I mean, until July, August, September, and Mr. Fuller, Commissioner Fuller does what he said he was gonna do, and I would like to be a part of that if I have...
So why don't you work on it together, if it's okay with Mr. Fuller?
Whatever, Mr. Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah, let me draw a week or two to draft up, kind of like what, how to put the committee together, and then, what planning is, I think that should come back to both the planning and zoning commissions at that point, to make kind of, to formalize the decision on how to proceed with the task force after that. The other thing to keep in mind, this town goes back to 19, 1639, so 1965, it's just a quick flash in time.
Wish you kept your Mustang from 1965.
Money was no longer made of silver at that point either, but some things, even going back to 1791, still might be valid today, so it's, the age or something is not necessarily indicator of the quality of the policy.
But it's worth relooking at. And I commend you, Mr. Vanski, Jay, we need to look at these things, at least to decide if we wanna proceed or not proceed, if every commission avoided all the hot-button issues, we'd still be stuck in time, so, I think we're, this is an accomplishment, I call this an accomplishment, I think, and I'm very proud of everybody who's put some thought into it, so, I don't feel bad about this at all.
It's very similar to town attorneys advising whether mayors, councils, or landlords' boards, they're a vice and consent, they're not the decision-makers, but even when elected boards disagree with them, they, they did their job providing the information for that commission, or for that board to make its decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's where the real public sector is, a lot of times is not really appreciated by the public, or by politicians, or by the media, it's, there's a lot of research that has to go into all this stuff.
Absolutely.
Jay probably feels like a lot of the town attorneys feel sometimes.
Ms. Peppin, I saw you had something.
Well, as I, as I said, here, we just have, you know, five different opinions also, but I think Jay putting this together, that's his expertise kind of, you know, angle, and like you said, it may not be perfect, but, and I agree, I think it's in, I think it probably is in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, moving on, I do not have, we don't have a CAM site review, zoning enforcement, accessory apartment applications, sediment and erosion applications.
Greenway.
Greenway. I think there's some news on the Greenway, I think.
I guess last night, they approved our BSC group to move forward with...
Yes.
That part of town between the boat docks, or boat docks, you know where I'm...
Barnham Avenue.
Yeah, and through Elm Street, and over and up, so, that will be continuing.
Okay, that will be excellent, just as a side note, I'm doing a public safety meeting on Thursday, but one of the items that has frequently come up is the kids who are riding dangerously on their bikes. And this project will help with bike lanes, and looking at some solutions that might address that, so I'm hopeful.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Number eight, outdoor seating, Mr. Habanski found it.
Yep. Um, let me see...
We were looking at changing our regulations, so that the outdoor seating, once they were approved, they did not need to come back to the zoning commission for reapproval, but that they could come into your office for approval.
And this just shows how out of touch I am with working at the counter these days. This is currently what we do. It's currently what we do. It comes to the zoning commission for an administrative approval, and then it comes, goes before the, it just comes back and gets signed off administratively in my office.
It does, now, we've had people who have come to us for their zoning application.
For liquor. That's when they've come back was, has been when they're changing, when it has a liquor component to it.
But what about, okay.
That's when they come back administratively, or for a public hearing.
So, the person, 'cause we have approved outdoor seating, Mr. Peace?
There was one where, it's not Mr. Peace now, I don't think.
Main Street Tavern, yeah.
Yeah, they actually had to come back for their outdoor seating, because they had a liquor permit there. When they were, they were adding outdoor seating, when they have, when they had an existing liquor permit, that's what forced them to come back.
Okay. Mr., okay, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, this, this was before the commission, Commissioner Peppin was here for that, too. I think it's important to keep these before the commission, at least administratively. There were a lot of people who came out with concerns about Main Street Tavern, most because of their experiences with Mr. Peace, which is a little unfair to treat Main Street Tavern because of the previous tenant, because there were complaints about motorcycles on the sidewalk, and on people's lawns, beer bottles on people's lawns, not to sound gross, but people were relieving themselves, and there were, they, some members of the community felt that outdoor seating would encourage more of unsavory behavior, which is not necessarily the case, but I do think to allow for administrative review with maybe, maybe not a full-blown public hearing, but a public comment section would be, at least give the public a chance to, at least, you know, have their say.
I think, if I understand Mr. Habanski correctly, that is not gonna change, and in fact, this whole idea that we have for outdoor seating does not need any changing, because we currently have it in place. It was a misunderstanding of our part, that they needed to come back to us every year to approve anybody their outdoor seating.
The light bulb just went off.
And as zoning enforcement officer, when they come back for their signature every year, can say, you've had 10 complaints, you're going back to the zoning commission for an approval.
Hmm, that's good.
There you go, so, we fixed it without needing to do any, that was an easy one.
Also, just, come from a historic perspective now, just having seen like four years of cases now, yeah, I think it is the liquor permit situation that has triggered hearings before the board. Typically, what has happened with...
And that has to come before us.
Yeah, and typically what has happened with outdoor seating, say all the liquor permits are lined up, approved the way they're, that they're supposed to be, so if they want outdoor seating, like the first year, the commission says, we'll have the hearing, what's your case, we like it, we approve it, here's the stipulations, they get a one-year probation, and then it was an administrative approval that was permanent after that, so once that one-year probation and go-ahead from the commission happened, they never needed to come back unless zoning enforcement found reason for them to come back with non-compliance.
So my next is a request to have a motion to strike outdoor seating from the agenda.
Motion to strike.
By Mr. Fuller?
I second.
By Ms. Peppin?
I still had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, you can have a question.
I'll throw the motion.
It's all right.
Before you go off...
Discussion?
I just wanna repeat it one more time, because we did talk about it last month, or the last meeting, that they will come up every year to make sure that there is no issues or whatever, because we don't wanna have, buy their square footage, and then next thing you know, they move it out, 'cause who can monitor them all the time, you know, and stuff like that.
I know what he's talking about.
And then all about, like Commissioner Fuller said, and you were just saying that they will come all the time, I mean, at the end of the year for the next year is what I'm trying to spit out here, because there's been issues where they, you know, we gave them 20 by 20, and the next thing you know, it's 30 by 20, all right? And I think it needs to be every year they keep coming, and have somebody maybe check on it, or not check on it, and then like you said, that if there's an issue with the police, or like John will say, well, you know why? Hey, this is, we've had too many reports, I mean, we're all for the outdoor seating and everything, it's just that we need to keep on it, because if we don't, they're just gonna wanna get away with everything. That's all, and I think we talked about that.
Mr. Fuller, and then Mr. Ball?
I'm just, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Druyanov, because I think that the first part about the, they want X amount of seating, are we confusing that with takeout? Going into another area we were discussing about the takeouts and...
Now, we approved the takeout seating.
Okay, so that's already...
That's already done, this was just...
Yeah, no, because I think what happens, Commissioner Druyanov, like, it's the first year that's the really important one, so, the commission will approve it, a year goes by, there's no, Windmill is a perfect example, that came before the, this commit, before you were here, so, the first time it was up, when Blasys took over, a couple neighbors, I won't say they were opposed to it, but they had a couple concerns, and then one year later, those same neighbors, because Windmill did such a good job, came back in support of permanent outdoor seating, so, and after that, they didn't need to come back before the board unless they violated a stipulation, or, or if zoning enforcement found something with them.
Mr. Ball?
I have more of a question, on, has it ever come up where there's an issue with smoking outdoors, and now you're having outdoor seating? Is there a condition that we're putting in that says, if you're gonna do a seating outdoor, then you gotta enforce the no-smoking policy? I'm surprised that hasn't come up as a contentious issue yet.
They passed one for the public areas at the beach, but that's about all that I know about. Mr. Fuller?
Typically, non-smoking is more handled by city ordinances, so the town council will be the governing board.
And they did, the council passed an ordinance that they were designated smoking areas at the beaches, but that's the only thing that I know that has come up.
So we should probably defer this back to the town council?
It is, for that piece of it, yeah.
Yeah?
Can I go through you, with Commissioner Paul? So what you're trying to get at is, if they're outside eating, that you want a separate area for them to be smoking in, outside, so if you got a square, let's say this side here, if you're a smoker, yeah, that's where you go, and this side would be, okay.
Yeah, or, you know, in other words, people are generally pretty comfortable today just going outside the door, and hanging out in front of the door, as long as they're outside, they're smoking, and that's, that's annoying non-smokers, a big time. It gets worse when you're trying to eat now, and somebody's out there smoking, so, I'm surprised this hasn't come up as an issue yet.
I think they usually, and I don't know, I mean, I, I think that for outdoor patios, they don't allow smoking while the kitchen is open, once the kitchen is closed, then there's, I think they usually allow people to smoke out there.
That's the health department?
I don't know, no, no, I think that's just like, I've never had it.
There's no issues, and don't some of the restaurants already have their own like rule?
Yeah, they are.
I don't know if you wanna call it a rule, or an ordinance on their own?
Informally, probably informally, 'cause I know, I do a lot of outdoor seating, and people who smoke actually...
I'm not against it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rieguskas, any thoughts before we call the vote?
Well, I have seen, not a lot, but, you know, there are restaurants where there are people smoking while food is being served at the outdoor tables, whether that violates some town code or anything, I don't know, but it's there.
Okay, well, we have a motion, it's been seconded, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Great, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now, going on to the 833, Mr. Ball, you had asked if we were gonna get an update. We had invited, it's in your packet, I believe, we had invited State Representative Hoidek and State Representative Gresko to come and update us on that legislation, I've been trying to follow it myself, and we got a note back from Mr. Gresko, saying, from him and Ms. Hoidek, that it is, at this point, premature to discuss it, or dive into it further with a hearing. Governor Merloy is non-committal on the legislation, meaning a veto is not out of the question. I would suggest waiting until we know the fate of the bill before scheduling an information form.
I just wanna add to this.
Well, let me, let me finish, Mr. Ball, here.
Madam, I just wanna, I didn't get a handout on that, is there some document that's floating around that we should have gotten?
It was an email?
From Representative Gresko.
It should be, it should be in your packet.
I was looking for a big report, but just one email, okay, I'm fine.
No, it's just an email.
Okay.
Mr. Fuller, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just a little extra, kind of, on, at our last zoning meeting, actually, the House voted that night to pass this legislation, the State House, and then the next week, I believe, the State Senate passed it as well, so it is in the governor's hands. I keep, I keep tabs on CT Mirror, CT News Junkie, and Capitol Report quite a bit, and there really hasn't been any sort of indication from the governor which way he's gonna go on this, I think everything's all about the budget right now.
Yeah, I think so. You probably know a little bit more, Councilman Manis has been really on top of this, and I've been trying to keep up with it. It does change, it has some benefit for Stratford, not as much as some of the other communities like... communities like Milford that I had seen. But what it does do is, in the calculation of what is an affordable income, that has been redevised so that it's more reasonable. Currently, the affordable, the calculation for what is an affordable income salary or limit is very, very high, and we often joke it's not really affordable. That calculation has been redevised and will be lowered more reasonably. Exactly what it is, that's the part I don't know. The other thing is the threshold of what is included in affordable housing has been expanded. Now, the biggest change is they've now included what they call mobile homes, trailers, trailer parks. But it may also, excuse me?
To help Shelton.
Yeah, to help Shelton and Milford. Kim Rose is leading that. But there are some other caveats that might include housing that we have that could be included. Now, that's the part I'm not sure. If it's housing that receives state funds that now, is it still requiring deed restrictions? I mean, there's a lot of the caveats and the detail that I'm not certain about. So there is some benefit in that, and that's why I had asked for the state reps to be here because they know some of the nuances between the two bills. Mr. Fuller?
I think you might see more success once session is out because I know it's going to be tough to get a state rep until the whole budget special session is taken care of. They're spending long nights up in Hartford. They make the town council look easy, actually. A little humor at our own expense, I suppose, but the state budget situation is far more dramatic than the towns and much more wide-sweeping. So it might be tough to get a state rep. Maybe we could get one of their aides down as well, if that might be an option.
Well, I think they would come, and they were quite willing to come. They just wanted to be sure that the legislation passed before they made that point.
And there's another development with it, too. I know there was a petition going out in the Stony Brook co-op about the deed restrictions that would allow them to go under, prior to this legislation.
Yes.
To go into what was the current, the existing 830G, and it was a majority. I don't remember what it was. I don't know what it does to get them on the books procedurally, but there is definitely will and intent from the Stony Brook population-
Yes, there is.
-to get back into the 830Gs, which would radically grow our numbers.
Right. Mr. Rukuska?
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Fuller's earlier comments about the governor because I actually did see a couple of comments from him that were pretty hostile towards this bill. The quote that sticks in my head is, "I don't know what these people are thinking." So there's definite fear that he's going to veto it.
Okay. Well, I will say, both state reps were more than willing to come and come before us and talk. That was not an issue. They just wanted to see a signed bill and not waste anyone's time before they talked to us. That's all. So I'm going to put that aside. That can just stay on the agenda until we hear something further, one way or the other. Army engine plant property update, anything to speak of? No? Medical marijuana, methadone?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we have an update on where we are with the army engine plant? I'm getting a lot of questions on that, so do we have an update of where we are?
There's no update from the town's side, other than the Department of Defense and the Army Corps of Engineers are trying to figure out what gets cleaned up first.
No news.
It's been going on for a few years.
But the, that's my understanding, with the mud flats is the big issue, but everything else has been agreed upon by point-strapper team that cleans the rest?
Most of it. It's two feet of mud, well, I say it's two feet. I don't know if it's more than two feet.
Yeah, I don't know how many feet it is.
It's two feet deep, but it goes out pretty far in the jetty, that they're still doing additional testing. They got funding several months ago to do additional testing, but those results don't come back to the town. That comes back to the state and the army engine plant.
Yeah, because I-
So-
Yeah, I think last night, the mayor says that it was still in litigation with the two departments.
Nobody's expecting any surprises right now. Next week for the mar- Say that three times. Medical marijuana, methadone. I know, and I'm sensitive to everybody's schedule, and I think it's very legitimate. So we're going to try to start at 6:30, go as far as we can, see what the planning commission can do with their agenda, and if it's possible for us to come back. If you do get here earlier, the, I don't know what, I think the people are coming, what time are they coming?
They're going to be here at 6:30.
6:30, yeah. So you might want to talk to them.
The letter says 6:00 PM.
It does.
There's a FLOI rules, as long as you gavel in and then recess, that you'll be able to comply.
Okay, but I appreciate everybody's comments. We're really trying to include everyone. It's trying to balance between their, our guests and our schedules as well. Ms. Peppin?
Did anybody see the, there was an article in a paper this past week about Westport or something? The only thing I got out of it was that they were concerned with how many they should have in their town.
How many?
How many dispensaries? Are there only two allowed, or they weren't sure?
I think Westport allows two.
Or they were going to put in for just two, maximum?
They want two.
They want two.
Yeah, and everything I've heard from the state is that the target for the permits are only going to be Fairfield County. So I think that's why there's so much interest in Stratford at the moment.
Oh, okay. But is there, is there, did the state put a limit on how many you can have in the town? Or no?
I, no. I think that the limit is just on the sheer number of permits that are issued per period.
Issued in fair, okay, okay.
Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, and a lot of it's delegated by DCP, Department of Consumer Protection. So they, either them or the state legislature could always tweak the number as well. So that's something that's state government. I have another source that might be useful, too. Maybe we could invite her to one of the zoning administrative meetings one time. The owner of the Bethel Medical Marijuana Dispensary, I forget the name of them, they're the ones who were denied by Bridgeport a couple of years ago, and then Bethel gave them a home. She, in conversations I've had with her in the past, just kind of, she was just wanting updates when I was chairman about where we were in the process. One thing Bethel did was, and was to cap it at one per the whole town. That'd be something I would disagree with. I'd rather just have the market decide based on our regulatory structure what would be permissible and whatnot. And the other thing where I've become much more unfavorable of this, in addition to Trump, Clinton, Johnson, and Stein saying they were all for medical marijuana in some capacity, is that we're seeing an increase in the opioid epidemic. Oxycontin is legal heroin, for lack of a better term, and this is, there's a moral obligation for us to do this.
Very good. Well, that's our update. Parking, Mr. Habski, I know you've been really, really busy, and I think that was also delegated out to our part-time planner, sort of?
And it has fallen a bit by the wayside with some of these other big lifts that we've been working on. I mean, we started, we did an initial start, and we've got some initial numbers, but unfortunately we haven't been able to really, really drill down on it.
Do you think we will be able to? Let me come back. Do you think we will be able to come back to it, or what do you think the future of this is?
Absolutely. Well, I think that a lot of it is going to depend on what happens with final decision with 5.3. If that gets kind of put on the back burner, then that's something that we can jump, and that's a relatively small-
Okay.
-change for us, the parking. So-
Okay. Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I started, since medical marijuana is going more towards the broader commission, planning, and zoning commissions, that also freed up my play, too, so I started to take a look at this issue as well. It's, you're not going to be able to fix parking in one fell swoop, but you're able, you'll be able to chip away at and look at certain things. So one thing I was looking at is restaurant and certain retail sorts of parking where it's really kind of in and out, but also looking at site plans that were within X amount of footage from public parking as a way to alleviate the parking burden.
Maybe you want to take that and define it in a more narrow sense, instead of just parking.
Yeah.
Maybe a smaller scope of parking that might be more reflective.
The other question is, are there any other parking, because usually the complaint comes up with restaurant and retail, that we just don't have enough parking for, or our parking regulations are way too strict for that sort of usage. Is there any other complaints about other sorts of land use where we have parking problems, as in our regulations are too tight?
Mr. Habski, any thoughts?
We're going to go through the parking calculations for every use that we have.
Yeah.
I mean, and we're going to give a parking calculation for things like a school. We currently, you build a school, you could have one, you could have no parking spaces.
You could have Nichols, or you could have Second Hill.
So, you know, we're going to try to address some of those, the gaps that we're seeing, too, but we're just going to go through every single use that we have and, and figure out what's going to be the best parking calculation that fits the town by size and use and neighborhood, however we decide to categorize them.
Get a lovely chart. Mr. Paul?
Madam Sheriff, are you looking at parking also that's including the railroad station? Or are you just looking at overall, the whole town?
Yep, just by land use.
Just by land use, okay.
And that's state, that's state property, so we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, and I was also going to ask, does that tails into what's going on with the center school project as it relates to parking and lack thereof?
No, I mean, no, I mean, currently, the way that the parking made its way into goal settings was more along lines of what Commissioner Fuller was saying. They're just, it doesn't seem balanced what we're requiring for restaurants and single-family or whatever. It happens to be not so much with Stratford Center or Center School or the TOD.
Okay.
Currently.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes, and point of order, I'd also question, for caution, we should be very careful about discussing Center School. Granted, I don't think any one of us will see it as a zoning petition, but you never know.
Never know.
The only time we should really discuss it as potential land use within a zoning regulation, more from a legislative standpoint, as opposed to what should or should not be specific to a single plot of land. So I just want to be very cautious about that.
I think you're absolutely correct, absolutely correct. Okay. I, recommendations to the town council, I haven't heard of any, I didn't have any recently. The POCD, we did talk about a little bit. We don't have the funding, and that was specifically what that was about, was to generate the funding and start the process that, Mr. Paul, you had read the paragraph, that was the intent, but at this point, until we get additional funding, it's sort of on hold. Now, let's get to the stuff that we really need to finish. TOD, consider revising the density to 30 bedrooms per 40 square foot. Mix use is an incentive, gets a little bit more, and consider adding portions of Bardem Avenue to the TOD. Hopefully tonight, we can come away with some decisions on this so that we can move this forward, one way or the other. Let's start with the density. Any thoughts?
I'll just reiterate just for, to kick off the discussion, so kind of my thinking on this was, one of the major points of the POCD, and by default, the child of, one of the children of POCD was the TOD, was really intended to have mixed use, and we haven't really seen that. So that prompted me to think about, well, how do you adjust the policy to see more of mixed use? And one way to do that is not necessarily to limit density, say, we're taking down all housing to a certain level, but we'll reward those who honestly try to do mixed use. So you have a higher housing density if you use office, retail, or some other sort of usage to your property, because now you're bringing in both a residential and a commercial tax base. That's good economic development, and also if we're trying to redevelop the TOD neighborhood, that also helps us define the character of that neighborhood a little more, because right now it is a lot of brown lots and it's a lot of under-utilized properties. So this, to have kind of an incentive for mixed use goes to what the POCD is trying to say about targeting your density to specific areas. So that was kind of my thinking about this. We can't create a market, but we can incentivize and catalyze a market.
I believe this idea of the incentivizing mixed use with a bit more leniency on the bedrooms was part of the idea that you brought forward.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
The reason why I'm willing to reward that is I've heard from developers saying residential is where they make most of their money, and also one of the reasons why they would be favorable retail, if you have more people there, that presumably that is more shoppers and consumers and commuters, which would then revitalize and grow those local businesses.
Absolutely.
So I think if you have someone that's going to go the business track, to give them the market for that as well, and that's where the density comes in, where I'd rather just, and also we're discouraging full residential without saying, "No, this can't happen," because otherwise you're never going to have the Salsi project or the Crest Episcopal Church project, and those would still be vacant lots.
Yes, and not to reference any specific project, but one of the things, the 30 bedrooms I've been working with Mr. Habski on, 40,000 square feet is just a little under a acre, correct? So to put this into some concept of how to think about it, you know, you've got an acre, you've got 30 bedrooms, two acres, you've got 60 bedrooms, three acres, which is about the largest property that we've seen come before us, that would be 90 bedrooms, which would be under 100. We have, through our experience, been leaning in that direction anyhow. This would just codify it in a way that makes sense. Now, the benefit of codifying it is that when a seller goes to sell their property, they often will look at that regulation, price out what they think the value of that property is, and then it's sold. The buyer then says, "All right, I'm expecting 30 bedrooms. That's what I'm going to put in for." If he bought the property, or she bought the property expecting 50 bedrooms, well, that's what they're going to come to us with. So what this does is really price the market more accurately to what we feel comfortable with. It doesn't really, doesn't mean, though, that if we're looking at some properties that are far away from residential, and we might be more forgiving for more density, that we can't also consider that. This is not a cap. This is, it gives us that allowance. These are still special case. They still have to come before us, all the rules start applying. But it really then puts the market back into a common sense to what we are more comfortable with. Any thoughts, Mr. Rukuska? I don't want you to feel left out over there.
No, I just agree with that. I guess one quick question. You've got 30 bedrooms for 40,000 square feet. I assume that if it's like 60,000 square feet, it would be 45 bedrooms? It's not, you've got to hit the next 40,000 before you increase, yeah? No, I like the incentive component of that. That's the way to do it.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I like the idea of the incentive, and I was just going to throw two things out. One is a question, and one is another idea. As they develop in TOD districts, are they aware and they're currently considering putting affordable mixed-use housing in these developments as well?
I'm not sure if I heard you well. I apologize. Say that again, please.
When a developer proposes a mixed-use development, and let's say he goes with 40 units, is 10% of that going to be affordable? Are we requiring that, or is that something that's open and optional at this time?
It's optional at this point. We have not made it requirement. That is something, though, that we still, even in our ability now, we can still instruct or stipulate a certain portion of it to be affordable.
Reason why I bring it up, because again, it's in the plan, PC, this plan document talks about mixed-use development, and I thought they mentioned TOD areas to include affordable housing, at least with 10% assigned to affordable housing.
I know.
But I could be wrong, but I guess I'm throwing it out for discussion only because I think that's another incentive, because, correct me if I'm wrong, developers do get tax credits for putting in affordable housing. So again, if we allow affordable housing as part of that mixed-use development, there's another incentive for them to stay within the parameters we're setting forth, whether it's 35 or whether it's 40. And then the other caveat is, I still feel that because the overlay district is a half a mile out, that it would be more advantageous is if we gave them a 40 or 40-bedroom, provided they provide shuttle service in their design. Because what's missing is the- Because what's missing is the practicality and the reality of nobody's gonna walk in our winter months to the railroad station from a half a mile away. We need the buy-in of these developers to build into their plan shuttle services from where they are, because, let's take, and I, I don't wanna mention their names, but anything that's a half a mile out, if they put in a shuttle service, it looks like it's gonna work, it's gonna attract people, and it's going to be something that can be usable, but we've gotta incent that, and that's the point that's missing right now, we're not incenting that. So, increasing the bedrooms might be another way to incent shuttle. If they see that, they may weigh that against the cost and say, well, the, maybe the return is there, because I've got a lot more units going in.
It's very rare possible. I know Mr. Fuller has a, a question. The only thought that I do know is that the affordable housing regulation actually is for ten percent affordable housing, that is the incentive, you get to do the eight-thirty-three if you put ten percent in. We're sort of overlapping the two regulations between TOD and affordable housing. Right now, the applicant has a choice of doing one or the other. Um, that's just my only thought. Mr. Fuller, you wanted?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, this is more to kind of, uh, to clarify, um, if someone were to come in with the eight-thirty G affordable housing, they're coming in not as a TOD application, they're coming in as an eight-thirty G application.
Exactly.
So all this proposals to the TOD and the current language in the TOD, this is even applied, they, they do whatever they need to do. Um, so, so all this is, is all kind of a moot point, if they're coming in under that designation.
Well, that, I'm agreeing with you, because, and I think your thoughts were well placed, Mr. Paul, but if they're gonna do affordable, they're gonna do affordable.
Right, let me just read.
Before I jump, I, I cut off Mr. Fuller, so I wanna give him back the floor.
And with eight, and with the eight-thirty G, say you're an eight-thirty G application, any eight-thirty G application, any town, anywhere in Connecticut, it's not ten percent, it's actually thirty percent of the units are affordable, and then half of that, fifteen percent, is sixty percent of market rate, however, the eight-thirty G defines the market of that community, and then the other fifteen percent is eighty percent of that market rate. So they have to have fifteen percent sixty and fifteen percent eighty percent of whatever calculation the state uses, and it looks like the proposed legislation is looking to kind of adjust what was considered.
Just those mixes, yes.
Which is, would be very helpful. With TOD, uh, the P O C D did recommend that to the TOD, but for the steering committees, planning and zoning commissions, it found that it would kinda create more density than what the TOD really intended if you allowed for a ten percent affordable housing. There was also a lot of public, uh, concern about it too, is that you would consolidate all the affordable housing into the fi- into the half-mile radius around town.
That's how I understood it as well when I was involved in it. Mr. Paul?
Right, let me just read, uh, page five on the population and housing. Action step number four and five. Four is, the action step is to facilitate the development of high-density mixed-use structures in Stratford Center area according to the TOD zoning overlay. And five, which is the point I was looking at, and I was clear with that, uh, the, the action step should also support development efforts to create well-designed, affordable housing units, particularly within the mixed-use development. So it sounds to me that the plan, in essence, was promoting that kind of development anyway, and that if that's there, then that should be an incentive, so when we start addressing bedrooms, we, we try to tweak that to advocate for not only affordable housing, but for shuttle.
Mr. Fuller?
Uh, if I could respond, if I may, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think it's safe to say that every TOD application we have seen has had some degree of controversy from the public. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're also proposing to allow to incentivize an affordable housing component to what's already a volatile policy? A- a- am I, uh, am I catching you correctly?
Yeah, let me clarify this. Town of Stratford is not in compliant now with the state law, and, um, based on some of the legislation that I read, uh, we've got five years to get ourselves in line. This initiative that I'm talking about moves us in the right direction, because whether we hear noise or not, we're behind the A-ball with regard to compliance with the state. We've gotta put affordable housing somewhere in this town. There's no getting away from that. So I'm introducing this as a process to meet our requirements of the state law in a controlled fashion that allows us to incent developers to do it the way we're defining it, and anything we do to incent them to do it the right way, I think is a good thing, uh, because if no, if we don't take the advantage of it within this half-mile radius, uh, we're gonna be bleeding into the suburban areas to meet our, our affordable housing goals, and which one do you think is gonna be the easier sell?
Neither.
Thank you, but we've gotta do it.
I, personally, I'll just put my thoughts in it. I, I think the TOD is plagued with a lot of controversy as it is. This is to address some of the concerns specifically that have been brought forward by the public. Adding in an affordable housing component, although noble as I agree, I think will muddy the waters more and make it more difficult for people to understand. I'd rather look at an affordable housing regulation or something that comes from the state that updates eight-thirty G, rather than trying to mix the two in one regulation. Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yes, um, this commission struck affordable housing from goal-setting, maybe it'd be appropriate to, um, put it back on. So, um, in addition to that, um, the, I don't, also if we're still talking about the density component, um, I, I'd like to talk about the, um, bottom math considerations, also if people still have density.
Before we get too far, 'cause I do wanna go to that, I, I just wanted to get some consensus on at least the first and the second point, and then we can go to the third one. I mean, I understand, and I just wanna respond responsibly, I think your idea is a great idea, and, and I wanna see more affordable housing. I just respectfully would like to get this passed, and then use our authority as a zoning commission to incentivize on a per-application basis, if we wanna say, well, the applicant comes forward and says, I will put two or three affordable housing units in, in my plan if you allow me more. That doesn't preclude us from doing that, it is really up to then the, the body to decide if they wanna accept that. Yes.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, Madam Chair, and I, and I agree, I don't wanna s- say delay progress here, I think this is a good incentive that we wanna do, uh, but we probably should take a second look at this down the road to build in more incentives. So I guess, phase one, we do what we've documented here, I think is a good plan, and then phase two, we start looking at, maybe looking at other incentives.
Absolutely.
And I'm throwing out shuttle, and I'm throwing out affordable housing as food for thought for the next time we discuss incentives for the developers.
Mr. Fuller?
Well, the, the shuttle could be defined as something within a mixed use too, so that might already be defactored in and the, the incentive for, we might already be taking care of that. If, if that's what Commissioner Fuller's vision is, to have, um, a shuttle friendly town, well, shuttles could be considered mixed use, you know, it could also be a transit hub as well as, you know, housing units or apartment units or condo units, which is technically mixed use.
Actually, I like the shuttle idea from a number of, on a broader perspective, not just for housing. We have an issue where our youth and many people cannot get from one side of the town to the other side of town, because we don't have that kind of public transportation, but that brings in a much broader perspective than I think you were initially referencing.
Yeah, and I think the-
Mr. Paul had his head on-
And I think the shuttle isn't just a, a, a thought, that the shuttle is a, an idea as, as something that's been implemented in other communities that are putting up a TOD-related project, so this shuttle idea of developers footing the tab, it's common, it's happening in different, uh, cities around the country.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Paul, Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, just, just a little, uh, contact, context for everyone too. I sit on a subcommittee that looks at marketing for the town, uh, we're very informed, we just make recommendations after doing some research, and one of the suggestions we're looking at is some sort of trolley service, um, which might satisfy, um, it's not like a trolley where it tracks, but it's a bus that looks like a trolley. But, um, so, I mean, that's something that, to connect it from Main Street River Road, who's Huntington, all the way down to the southern parts of town, um, and to fund it by corporate sponsorships that they're able to put their advertising on the bus.
I'd love that.
You know, just wait, so there's, there's a lot of, you, you begin to see a lot of convergence of similar solutions in other bodies of the town as well.
It does, I, I think the idea is good, it's just how we approach it and how much we can get done right away. Mr. Rukuskus, any thoughts?
I just love that trolley idea, and I think that it would help all the businesses, because it would open it up to a whole new group of people, so hopefully businesses would be willing to help support that, and, there's a lot of logistics that go into it, but I hope it happens.
It also makes it more elderly-friendly too, it, it gives, allows elders to stay in their single-family homes or their condos and still be able to get around town as well.
And I think it brings tourism, it brings a great character and image to the town of Stratford, and for that trolley idea, uh, let's really hope that flies, 'cause that's a good one.
Mr. Fuller, I think you hear a lot of support, it's something that I know that's been kicked around, but we're, we're giving you all our support that that may happen.
Yeah, and it's something that's not really, zoning doesn't really affect trolley, I mean, doesn't really govern trolleys, but I, there's other avenues in this town that's looking at that, so I think, um, to look at TOD to be pedestrian-friendly, which would also encourage busing and, and trolley and biking-friendly, uh, development would help that quite a bit. I, I, I've, you know, the question would be is, you know, with the density, is, is thirty appropriate for full residential, and is forty appropriate for, for the incentive? I, I think it is, uh, you, you need to have a significantly higher number for the incentive in order to make the incentive viable.
Do you want thirty-five or forty?
I, I would prefer forty, just, just so there is an incentive.
Okay, so let me just make this easy, Mr. Paul, thirty or forty? The mixed use.
I hate to be different, but-
Pick one.
I, I like thirty-five with a caveat that says it could go forty under, uh, special conditions.
You can always stipulate, yep. Ms. Peppin?
I like thirty-five.
Mr. Giuliano?
I'm gonna go with the thirty-five.
Mr. Fuller, you said?
Forty.
Forty? Mr. Rukuskus?
I think forty's more of an incentive, so I would go with forty.
Ooh, we're well split here. I'm actually more the thirty-five, because I believe, and Mr. Hibansky told me, if we wanted to go forty, we would have that ability to do forty if we so chose, right?
If you had it written in there somewhere that says that you could do that, you couldn't just do it, you would have to say somewhere in the regulation change, the, the maximum allowed with mixed use is thirty-five, however, the zoning commission has the discretion to add an additional five units per acre, should they, blah, 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 I like that.
I like that.
And, and Madam Chair, the, me-
What, what criteria, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to finish my-
Go ahead.
I didn't finish thinking about it entirely.
Well, I could tell you, if you allow me, the reason I went with thirty-five is if an applicant comes in, and I've kind of felt this, with one mixed-use retail space, um, to satisfy that criteria, I'm not ready to give forty. If they came in with five retail spaces, then I could do forty. It, it has to do with my concern about how far they take the, the extent of that limit. Mr. Fuller?
And if you make the, the difference between the incentive so minimal, you're never gonna see mixed use. You really have to draw contrast. If you, if you really wanna encourage mixed-use development, you really have to give them the avenue to be rewarded for mixed use, and who's to say that one mixed-use space isn't a ground-floor store, that maybe it's a-
Rooftop bar?
Or a rooftop bar, or, um-
Good point.
Or, or something like the level building, we have restaurants on the lower level.
Can you help us here with how we would do this?
I would, I would, I mean, the purpose of the TOD is continue its activated ground-floor space, that should be, I, in my opinion, that's what you're trying to achieve, a walkable, pedestrian-friendly network, uh, streetscape. If you want the maximum allowed incentive, you should provide the entire first floor should have to be activated first floor ground space.
Then I could, then I can go with forty. My concern was somebody would give us one small corner in retail space or something and say, oh, I've done the minimum. Yep.
So, I like the idea of the incentives, I like the idea of a trolley, which we've talked about, busing, uh, everything Commissioner Fuller, Commissioner Paul, but I wanna go back and be the Grim Reaper here, every applicant we've had come up does not wanna do mixed use, I don't know what incenses, incentives we can do, I can name them, I won't, it's really hard to get them to do it, I don't, I mean, you know, we're all talking a great story, but I mean, it's so hard for them to come, and then, like Commissioner Fuller said, he, he, he talked about the transportation, and I was sitting here going, why do I feel like we're making this lift by ourselves? All right, I mean, we have a mayor, I never hear anything about TOD from the mayor, has he come here, should we invite him? The other departments? I, I look at the schedule, there is a TOD committee. I'm like, TOD committee, what am I doing here then? All right, I mean, I, I just wanna go back, I wanted to back up, because I, I can't believe how many people, how many builders don't wanna do the mixed use, I don't know what we could do, I mean, there was great ideas, this is what we need, but I think we need to have more people with us. I mean, we can't, I, I don't know, I would love to do it myself or on our own, I mean, all of us, just on the commission is what I mean, but I, I, I just don't, I, I don't, I don't see, uh, economic with us on it, I mean, they're doing what they can, I, I don't want, I'm not torpedoing any agency here, I refuse to, uh, go down that road and say, oh, this one, that, this, that, okay? Everybody's got their own agenda and trying to do what they can, okay?
Well, let, let's have Mr. Hibansky answer.
I just wanted to add one thing, is that, not next month, 'cause they didn't make the deadline, but the following month, we'll have our first fully mixed-use TOD project coming through. All activated ground-floor space, all retail, residential apartments above.
And I'm willing-
Close to the center of town, I should add to.
And I'm willing to go with forty if, if it means first floor activation, or even up it to forty-five, that, if that's what would encapsulate true mixed use.
And I'm just the opposite, I'm a little more conservative, that even if the neighborhood saw mixed use, fully activated first floor, the neighborhood would respond in a way of, oh my god, this is a huge building, and it's still gonna be difficult, so I'm still cautiously saying thirty-five, but, uh, we can make this a vote, I'm, that's my concern.
Well, can't we, you know, say thirty-five, but up to the discretion of the zoning commission to-
They need those criteria.
Because, I mean, you look at all our other regu-
Based on what criteria?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Based on what criteria?
I, I was going under the criteria of, look at some of our regulations, it's up to the zoning commission, there's worded, and they're, oh, just up to them to decide what they wanna do on something.
Yeah, that may be hard, I'm, I'll be clear, I'm worried that thirty-five, or, in this case, five additional bedrooms, could be another floor, forty, could be two floors, depending on the size of the building.
Yeah, and then, well, that brings up a whole nother ballpark of this area here, sometimes, three stories is just plenty enough to look, I mean, you start going four, five, and six, it looks terrible, in a town where we wanna keep it, if you look at the-
We're talking about an acre, remember, this is an acre, our current regulations are forty currently. Fifty? Yeah, we've been doing-
And it's not units either, bedrooms.
Bedrooms. I'm just reminding you that we're still talking about an acre, most properties are an acre or two, so.
You know, I was under the misconception then, because I remember there might have been an applicant up that was X amount, and then we were talking about, because it does say that we can go even higher, and I'm like, well, that'll look, yeah, but if you sit back and look at that, it looks terrible going up higher. It's, it, I mean, what are we building, a wall? I mean, we're trying to do something that's acceptable, that's palatable, that's, my eyes are gonna say, hey, yeah, that's the TOD, it looks like- like what the Cecil Group put in there. Go thumb through those pictures. They show nice buildings, only two, three stories with the mixed use and everything.
So, are you saying thirty-five or forty? I'm confused.
Earlier, I said thirty-five.
Okay.
So, I haven't, I have not gone off of that. I was just going off on a tangent about our heights.
That's acceptable. Thank you.
Somehow that came up, and I think somebody said something on that.
Well, we're not really adjusting the height requirements in the TOD. So, that's still gonna remain.
Yeah, they can still go up to six?
Six. It's four stories. The zoning commission leaves it in discretion about height based on their certain criteria.
So, there's that criteria you were telling me about. That's what I was just saying. That's what we could do.
Okay. I really just wanted, trying to get a vote of some sort. Yes, Mr. Paul?
Just want to say one thing. I agree with Commissioner Giuliano, and I agree with what Jay just said. I think thirty-five is a good place, but I don't want that to be the ceiling. Thirty-five is a good place to start from a standard. But once you get somebody that's coming in here offering full-blown mixed use, and even if they wanted to go up another story, to go to forty, then we should take a hard look at that. I don't think we should shut the door on that opportunity.
And there's a way that it can be done by saying there's design standards.
Right.
Sustainable, sustainable components to the building, a green roof, or there's all these different standards. And you could somehow word it to say that the zoning commission, the zoning commission feels that all or a vast majority of the standards are met, that they have the discretion to add on however many bedrooms per acre that they want with a cap of what it is now, or forty, or thirty, or whatever you decide.
Can you write that up? Because I think that would work.
Okay.
Can you, would that, would that be a BZA, like, go before BZA first, though?
Well, I think the base is the thirty-five with a caveat of forty.
Blank number of bedrooms. Per forty K. And grant an additional, well, we gotta start with the base, but what's our baseline? Thirty, for a baseline for a mixed-use project?
Thirty-five.
Zoning can approve thirty-five bedrooms per forty thousand square feet for mixed use and grant an additional...
Is that complete mixed use per floor?
I think it should be an entire first floor. That's a criteria that you folks will have to determine.
Active, active space.
Entire first-floor activated space.
Do we need legal on any of this?
I'm sorry.
Do we need any legal on this if we change?
We're just doing the basic framework.
If we do go through with it, do we need legal to go review?
Yes. What you're doing is putting the framework together. It's gonna come back to us.
Right. I understand. Understand. I was just wondering how much, okay.
Yeah, it goes, it gets run up the whole chain.
It's gotta run up the flagpole.
Yes.
So, zoning can grant, can approve thirty-five bedrooms per forty thousand square feet of mixed-use space, as long as the project's entire first, and I'm gonna clean the language, entire first floor contains activated space and may grant an additional blank bedrooms per forty thousand.
Five? An additional five? That would take it up to forty. Five. It's five.
For forty thousand.
Five per forty thousand.
If, if the entire first, that's like, I want it, first floor contains activated...
Space. So, we have both. Mr. Paul?
Just a question now. That sounds good, but I just want to see what the ramifications will be. Are we gonna start seeing more three-bedroom apartments with those parameters? Because I'm thinking about our schools being overcrowded and getting...
I don't think it makes a difference, because this is based on bedroom, bedroom equivalence. So, whether it's one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom, there's still bedroom equivalents.
No, I think it does make...
May I misunderstood?
I want to make sure those bedroom equivalents doesn't equal three-bedroom units overall that we're averaging now, instead of where we're trying to keep it down to one and two bedrooms. Yeah. We don't want to open us up to a lot of families coming in.
Yeah, I don't think we understand.
With explosion of our education system. Otherwise, we gotta run that from body education.
Okay. I'm still, I apologize.
He's just saying with the volume that we're raising.
No, actually, we're diminishing, not raising.
No, I know, but I think you mean from the thirty-five to the forty.
To the forty, yeah. The forty, I guess I'm trying to, in my mind, think of what's the developer gonna be developing.
They're gonna pick more three-bedrooms.
Three-bedroom apartments now because there's more bedrooms involved, or are we gonna be able to still see a lot more one and two bedrooms?
Well, I think a lot of it's gonna depend on the market. I think if you just look at the applications we've had so far, all of them are, all of them are efficiency, one-bed or...
Occasional twos. Very occasional.
Some twos.
Well, can we, can we stipulate it so that nobody goes into a three-bedroom?
You can ask, well, the more we stipulate, the more we restrict ourselves. I'm just offering that the way it is now. You have the authority to say...
It's already in there, the bedroom mix.
Yeah, the bedroom mix, but you have that authority now.
Okay.
At least seventy percent of the residential units shall be efficiency or one-bedroom units. So, that's locked in.
That's there. And you still have discretion. Okay, so...
So, what about, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We're getting to the third part.
The pure, a pure residential development is allowed?
What was that, thirty be allowed?
Pure residential, which is the first one of thirty bedrooms. That's what we...
Well, if we're not raising the incentive, I'd rather see this drop down to twenty-five then. Let's really have a contrast. Really have that incentive.
Because they could always come to us with more than twenty-five?
They can only come to us with what we say they can. So, if it's a purely residential development, and we say they're only allowed twenty-five bedrooms per acre, that's the max that they can come to us with unless they come with a, some sort of horrible project or something like that.
I agree with Dave. I'm gonna go twenty-five.
Does that really hurt them on their dollar amount? Because it's all about the money. I mean, doing twenty-five, I mean, I agree with, but is that gonna, like, stymie them or not want to?
It reduces their, the attractiveness of a property.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going against what Commissioner Fuller's saying about the twenty, but I'm just wondering about that, because it's all about the...
I'll say this. No matter what number you go with, what, five units less, five units more, it's not gonna be the end of the world. And I think that if you make the decision, I think twenty-five is certainly reasonable, and I think thirty-five is certainly reasonable. They all are. You just have to be prepared to say, to adjust to what you think is going right or going wrong. So, I don't think there's a wrong decision on what you choose on this.
But then, regardless of what we go up, the applicant come up to us and say, I want to do a special case and I want to do forty.
Now, if they go with the caveats we suggest, then they can, which is a mixed use.
So, I guess to your point...
Then to your point, Jay, then whatever we do, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty, it is, yeah, all right. No, I get it. I just, you know, the processing point is, you know, takes, coming in and out is unbelievable.
I mean, my only concern, and it sounds like Jay is saying it wouldn't be a concern, is if suddenly we weren't an attractive town for developers to come to. If we're still gonna get people coming in here proposing projects, I would prefer twenty-five, because the smaller the better to me. But we don't want to become a ghost town either. So, that's my only concern.
And the justification is, if you want the mixed use, you really have to draw a sharp contrast between full residential and mixed use. So, having that thirty-five to forty allows the financial incentive to develop the mixed use that the TOD and the POCD really has aimed and endeavored to achieve.
Let me be devil's advocate for a moment.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's less units.
Let, let, let me, let me do devil's advocate. There are some areas that we may not want, and I can think of a few that we may not want. A full, active ground floor, and we would prefer smaller building. And, but that building would not be as, that property wouldn't be as attractive at twenty-five. I mean, how competitive we are, I think, is important. And is every, I mean, TOD, we do want mixed use, but there are some areas that we may not want that additional traffic from retail that we will be concerned about. And I don't want to trap ourselves. I think twenty-five is too low. I think thirty. There are times that, and there are many places that we say there's too much traffic for retail. I mean, retail does bring more traffic. I just don't know if I want to lock myself into something that makes it unattractive for that.
You gotta consider where the TOD is. It's Barnum Ave and Main Street, and then, you know, a little radius, you know, around that. That's where all the TOD, and a little bit of Ferry-Borvard under its current manifestation. Those are all major thoroughfares. Those are, if there's any roads that could handle traffic, it's those roads. Main Street's a little funny just because of that bottleneck at the train station.
That's exactly what I'm thinking about. And I know that when I went to the Complete Streets seminar, the program that they did, that was the biggest complaint, that people did not want more traffic on Main Street, and they were concerned that the Complete Streets program would have brought more traffic.
Well, what do you want then? A tax base or no traffic? It's one or the other, right? I mean, you gotta have traffic in a tax base. I mean, then we can work on the traffic later. Maybe we can do some roadwork or whatever. But I hear this all the time. I don't want this and that. Well, then, don't complain about your taxes. All right? I mean, we need to have it, and the traffic comes with it.
That's why I was favoring thirty more than twenty-five. Mr. Paul?
I'm still still on thirty. I haven't changed. I think thirty's the number. I'm just listening to some of the issues, but I haven't moved. I like thirty.
And how are we incentivizing mixed use? I mean, how are we really making it?
I, I, all right. I'm gonna do, I'd like for us to go with thirty. I think, you know, we, if we want to revise it later, we can, but I think we're already making a significant change. We've taken it down from fifty. Cutting it in half, I think, is really hurting ourselves. I mean, we're at fifty now.
It's at fifty. You're going down, and it loses it for the...
I want more of a contrast between mixed use and single residential, pure residential.
Then I think the way to do it is you go higher than forty, but that's a problem as well.
I said no to that, so, well...
Why don't we try it at thirty? And let's see how that feels.
So, that's losing the incentive to the builder. So, like, let's, let's just, listen, I'm just gonna throw a number out there. Let's do sixty. I'm sure the people in the town would flip, okay? That's an incentive to the builder. Oh, my God, sixty. Look at what I could do here, right? We don't want to, I don't want to do that. I'm just saying. You know, so now you're going to thirty, and I'm like, yeah, well, you know what? I'm not, because it's all about the almighty dollar here. And that's the other thing I was saying earlier. It's so hard. How many can, I can remember two people, we don't get the mixed use. It's hard. I agree with Commissioner Fuller. We need to, and Commissioner Paul, we need it.
Ms. Peppin, and then Mr. Paul?
I think that, I agree. I don't think there's, there's enough incentive there between thirty and thirty-five, because basically it's thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, if, so if they, if we incent, give them incentive for thirty-five with mixed use, which they have to find retail people to come in there, and then you're offering them thirty without that.
Well, it's at fifty now.
Then, you know, Mr. Paul?
Okay, have a compromise. Just like we have a caveat on the high end going from thirty-five to forty, let's have a caveat on the low end going twenty-five to thirty, so that we can address some of the concerns that Madam Chair has indicated with the center of town, and build some parameters that can allow us to go twenty-five to thirty based on the development proposal.
But they're gonna go thirty.
I, I got something that's way off-base, and I've mentioned this a hundred times. Certain projects that we had that when the tax base came out for that builder, what they had to pay was, was a lot compared to going somewhere else. I don't know where we can't even do that or whatever, but maybe an incentive would be maybe for a year or whatever. I, I don't know who would do that, to lower that tax amount of money for a builder to put up a project. Because there's builders that are out there that aren't in this town would want to come here, but they refuse to pay that fifty thousand dollars for a unit that they gotta put up when they can go to another town and pay the twenty-seven-seven. So, I mean, that's a big deal. I know builders that I talk to on the weekends, and they're like, they want to come down here, but they won't because of that. They'll go, and one other thing, Madam Champsky, but they'll go to, but they want to go to AFCO. They want to buy in on AFCO. Okay? So, I just wanted to throw that out.
That's a good idea. And I also want to respond to Mr. Fuller as also a suggestion that we've allowed it to go up to forty with caveats, and that's a discretion of it. If we're at thirty, and we really feel that they're not getting enough incentive, you, we have the authority to go to forty. That's ten additional units per acre. That's a lot.
Wait, for full residential?
No, if full residential was at thirty...
Yeah, I'm proposing twenty-five.
Right. But, and we wanted to have a larger disparity, so that they would be incentivized to go to mixed use. You can go up to forty. We just said we could do that.
But most of them are going to default to thirty-five, unless they meet those caveats and the commission agrees to it.
That's up to our discretion.
So, they're gonna, the path of least resistance would be thirty-five. So, you have a thirty and a thirty-five, a potential for forty.
I think they're actually gonna go for forty, because they're gonna want the most...
If it's too much building cost, they won't. If it's too much of a WPC hookup of fee, if it's building codes, health department, unit, everything that makes Stratford un-business friendly.
That's, that's what I was getting at. That, I don't even want to mention the one place I'm talking about. I mean, they got charged fifty grand for each unit.
Well, that would be an argument to go to thirty-five, not to go to...
That's a lot of money for a builder to come in.
Yes. So, Mr. Giuliano, are you saying you wanted the full residential at twenty-five or thirty?
I haven't made up my mind on that yet.
The point I'm getting at is not whether it's...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. The point I'm trying to get at is not whether it should be twenty-five on the low end or forty on the high end. The point I'm getting at is to have a wider gap between residential and, and mixed use to incentivize mixed use.
Can we word it that way? I mean, was that with Jay?
Well, you have to have, you have to have numbers.
I, I don't think it's...
Jay saying that, like, wording it like twenty-five? I don't know. And this, and if, is there a way to word that in there and go to thirty-five?
Thirty-five units is not enough of an incentive.
How many?
Five, the thirty to thirty-five.
I, I, see, I disagree. I think it's a big incentive, and I've heard that it's a good incentive. The other side of it is, I don't want to make us uncompetitive. If there are areas where a full residential would be preferable so that we could avoid the height, I think thirty is good. I know that in the properties that we had already had seen, some of them, that five extra bedrooms would have made all the difference if they had to do mixed use. It would have made all the difference in the world. I mean, that's, every acre, that's five additional units.
Well, another way to think about it is the square footage displacement of mixed use to residential. So, if you know one-bedroom apartment is equivalent to X amount of square footage of retail space, that's another way of looking at the equation.
Well, if you have a one-room efficiency that's eight hundred square feet, right, and you have one whole floor of those, you're saying that that would be, let's say they had ten there.
Yeah, so whatever they lose in residential's space for retail or other mixed use could be made up for with increased density. However you draw up that equivalency, that's going to be the math you have to crunch.
Yeah, that's like for a whole nother discussion on, that's a, it's not a bad idea, though. I kind of, because look at some of the ones that we've had. We've had one-room, not one, we had efficiencies that were around maybe, what, 500 square foot?
Is this why you're making it proportional to the property?
The, if I recall, the property, the hotel, wasn't that 900 square foot?
For the one efficiency? Or was that the one bedroom? Because they had two bedrooms.
I think that was the one bedroom. It was 900 square feet, which was actually pretty big.
That's not a bad size.
And most of them have been coming in around 900 square feet.
I don't know. They did.
You want to, did you have a comment? I didn't.
The square footage, well, that still goes back to the acre.
Well, can I make a suggestion, all right? This has to go through planning, and then it comes back to us. Would you allow us to go for it with 30? Let's see what it looks like, ran it up the flagpole. We can still have a chance to revisit this and change it to 25. But it'll give us a chance to try to get more information and get other opinions. And the 30 was recommended by Mr. Hervansky, and I tend to lean with his experience.
I'll bite.
Mr. Paul, let's go around.
I'm still on the 30. I haven't even changed.
Ms. Peppin?
I like 25, but I'll go with 30 if you think it's, and then we'll have suggestions. It's not written in stone.
It's not written in stone. Mr. Giuliano? Your turn, Mr. Giuliano.
I said I'd bite. I'll go for it.
Mr. Fuller?
I reluctantly bite.
Two for. Mr. Raguskas?
Knowing that it's going to come back around again, and we'll have a chance to go through this all again, I think that that makes sense. It's a starting point, and let's get other input and then see where we are when it comes back.
Sounds good. At least we can move on from this for tonight. The last thing is adding portions of Barnum Avenue to the TOD. I didn't, I forgot to bring my map with me this time, so I actually hadn't put. That, where this came about was, if you recall, we just approved that application on the Barnum Avenue extension, which I thought was not in the TOD, but it actually was. The applicant chose not to follow through on a TOD application. But this particular piece of it, which we can do separately, was to look at, is there other areas that, if we look at the map, that we want to include that we have not to incentivize it? Is there anything that jumps to the top of the map, anybody's head, Mr. Fuller?
I guess the question would be, where do we extend it to? Like, how do we extend that boundary? How far up or how, wherever towards Bridgeport, towards Milford we're looking?
I think it's, if I steal something.
There's an answer on that.
Do you think you've got an answer?
I've been thinking about, I mean, I've been thinking about this for a long time.
Go for it, please.
Waiting for the time to free up to do it. So, I mean, we've been thinking about doing an overlay district from the beginning of West Barnum Avenue to the edge of the TOD, where it's basically very similar standards, nothing higher than two, maybe three stories. And it basically, it's like the TOD, but completely tapered down, almost cut in half. You know, first floor retail, apartments above. And then the same would go, would potentially extend from Main Street where the TOD ends up to Paradise Green and to really protect and cultivate our commercial corridors. Those were our parameters that we originally.
The follow-up question, then, is this going to be its own overlay zone, kind of its Barnum Ave, Main Street overlay zone?
I mean, that's the initial thought, is how.
Where it incorporates some principles of TOD, but not quite as hardcore with the density, though we were about to neuter a lot of that.
You want that walkability that the TOD tries to promote with the first floor ground, ground floor, commercial space, which is already there, really. And by doing, by implementing an overlay, you're not creating all these non-conforming uses. Let's say somewhere in Barnum Avenue, you've got your random single-family house. That doesn't become a non-conforming use because the base zone is still there.
And I'm a big believer in overlay districts in areas where you have a hodgepodge of zoning. If you go up and down Barnum Ave, you get a full sense of Stratford zoning history that way, based on each building. This was 1930, this was 1890, this was 1970. I'm a big believer because Barnum Ave is probably the most difficult outside of the Army of the Evantry Plan because of state and federal factors. In terms of what we could directly control, Barnum Ave is probably the most tricky redevelopment we have in this town. Just because of the topography, the space limitations, that it is layers of zoning after layers of zoning over decades of time. So I'm a big believer in overlay zones, just to allow for more and more options to be used there. So it might be better to think of this not as an extension of the TOD zone per se. But it's going to be kind of, it's going to employ a lot of those principles of TOD. Maybe it's a Barnum Ave, Main Street redevelopment zone, maybe it's.
Village overlay.
Whatever catchy name we come to.
A catchy name would be nice so that it can distinguish.
I would just encourage a lower housing density than the TOD. Maybe where 30 is the maximum, or 35 is the maximum.
Well, there's some other areas even down where I'm at, where it's more industrial, down by Benton Avenue. Right now, it's all industrial, but there may be some incentives to put some kind of mixed use down there as well.
And maybe village overlay zone might be a good name. Also, there's, the Economic Development Commission could come up with some catchy marketing play for it, but.
Mr. Giuliano?
I'm sorry. Jay, I didn't hear your first part. You said it was starting from
the west. Side of Barnum. It would basically start the edge of Bridgeport, and then extend all the way over towards the TOD ends on King Street. I think King Street is approximately.
All right, so you were, yep.
Is where the Barnum overlay would end, TOD would resume. And then if it wanted to go north to connect, I mean, the.
So Paradise Green.
Stratford Center with some sort of continuity.
No, I think that's a great idea and come up with another catchy name, but then also what Commissioner Fuller said, that would work even better with having busing or the trolley or whatever, because that expands it, and people will just want to keep going. I mean, that's the whole idea. We don't have that. We need that. I mean, I just assumed, if I can get it to come up to Booth Park, I'll jump on it.
I would. Mr. Raguskas?
Well, no, that was actually my question. I didn't know it was going to be the entire Barnum Avenue. I mean, I think there's so much potential in that area. It's our Route One, and there are so many empty businesses, there are so many underutilized businesses. There's a lot of things that can happen there. I'd prefer to see more of an emphasis on business and retail over housing, but, you know, mixed uses would be great.
I'd like to see Honey Spot Road included in it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Paul.
That whole area that Jay's talking about is right, because it's really not, I don't know what it is, but that area is really not, you know, coming along. It seems like it's the last part of where everybody wants to do any business. I think if we did that, I would say that we need to really brand that street. I think Barnum Avenue branding, that name, we need to change. I mean, if we wanted to look like a Boston Post Road in Milford, then we should be calling it something close to that. The Post Road of Stratford or something. Get the name right so we can get the branding done better, and then we can start getting developers to pitch some ideas on what they could bring in there, and that would be an ideal place. So you're going to go from the Bridgeport line on Barnum Avenue all the way up to King Street, but why not just go all the way up to Main Street? And then Main Street is already an overlay district, and we're going to go down to Barnum Avenue cutoff. So that whole thing, my mind just tells me we should be rebranding.
It runs right into TOD.
Yeah, we should just rebrand that whole Barnum Avenue area if we're going to do this and call it the Post Road or something.
Well, I'm going to expand your thoughts a little bit further because I'd like to see Honey Spot Road and Lordship included in it, Axis Road. There's a lot of property that's being purchased up around those areas with the same ideal. Not to put TOD kind of housing, but something a little lower scale. And we're losing tremendous opportunity along Honey Spot Road. We're looking at a project to do some streetscapes to improve it. Lordship Boulevard, Axis Road, those are all opportunities for us, lower Main Street. Mr. Fuller?
It kind of reminds me, now you talk about this, it kind of reminds me of my second favorite place in West Haven. First being the beach in Boardwalk, of course, Campbell Ave.
Absolutely. So I'm just trying to expand your mind that there's some other areas that this could be appropriate to. That's all. Mr. Giuliano?
Giuliano. It's Irish. Remember that. Now you'll remember it, I guess.
Juliano.
You know what? I just want to be, I just want to say, I mean, this was great, that was all great ideas, moving this, what the discussion was, but remember, we're still in our infancy age here because it was only adopted in 2015. I mean, it's 2017, but we never really got off the ground until, whatever.
Yeah, 2014 was it really?
Yeah, 2014, but I was just going by the data that I have from Jay. I mean, that was that 2015 PDF that I got with all of this in there that got it going, other than the 2010 Cecil thing that Commissioner Paul always brings up and stuff, which is all great. But I just want to say that we're just beginning, and I think that was the greatest thing between Honey Spot, connecting all of that, and that's all.
I think you all are an exceptional group, and I think we've done quite a bit, and I'm very proud of all of you. So it's a testament that we're getting this much done quickly. I think we've got a lot. Do we need a motion, or you're okay just to move forward with the direction that we've given you?
I think it would be good just to codify a motion.
Yeah.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we send for review to the Planning Commission and other agencies. I guess what we're really focused on is the mixed use and the residential density, because the bottom half sounds like it's going to be its own overlay district. So I don't know if that would actually be part of the motion.
Make it into two motions.
Yeah. So I'll motion to refer to Planning Commission and agencies. The consideration for the density changes are 30-foot-a-bedrooms, units of 40,000 square feet for approximately an acre, and mixed use to go with 35, with 40 going up to caveats, as mentioned by the commission. Also, I would be encouraged to see how zone planning would address the differential between mixed use and residential use.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second by Ms. Peppin? Any more discussion before I call a vote?
Yes, if you want to go first.
Okay.
I just, really not really on there, really, really not on there. The new overlay with Honey Spa and Barnum and stuff. I just want to know, how do you think, does anybody really think how that's going to fly when it gets out there to any of the other people that we have to deal with, the planning? Now, we're going to tell them, you know, hey, we want to go do Honey Spa, we want to do the Barnum Ave from where Jay said, all the way down there up there. I mean, how about going around the corner later on to East Main Street?
There's scripts right now that are already thinking about that.
I'm sorry.
I think they'll, to answer your question, I think they'll be interested because that was actually part of a plan that existed on the council when I was on, and it kind of sidestepped, not for any negative reason. They just have bigger issues.
I just want to have a way out question there because I don't know, you know, when you introduce something new, people are like, yeah, I don't want that. I want, you know what I mean? I want to stay with my old thing. I like my old thing. Like, I mean, what Commissioner Fuller said, you know, I felt we were doing this alone, and he says, well, he's in talks with some people on something about doing busing or trolleys or whatever, like you were saying. I think that's great. I didn't even know that. So, that's my story, and I'm.
That's a good one. Any other questions? Mr. Hervansky, anything you wanted to say before? We have, yeah, we're in discussion, so.
I'm just trying to clarify, or have we moved on to the Barnum section?
No, no.
That's going to be a separate motion.
No, no, no.
Two different motions, right?
Yes.
We're still on the first two. So I'm going to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're going to talk about the Barnum Avenue and the overlay and whatever catchy name we want to call it. Mr. Fuller?
I'm not ready to make a motion just yet because I have a question. Have we, do we want to make a motion until we really encapsulate what sort of areas of town we want to be included in this new sort of overlay?
What you were doing is giving Mr. Hervansky some direction as to write up the regulations.
Sending it to agency for review.
Right, because he still has to come back to us with it.
Okay, yeah, so I guess it would be, I guess to take a look at where, what sort of major thoroughfares where this sort of mixed use potential would be beneficial? And I guess the other one is, what sort of, we would want housing density lower than the TOD. So to kind of come up with something that's proportionally lower, where you have maybe second or third floor apartments, but really nothing, not, nothing too much more than that.
I don't have anything to add. Anybody else?
I don't think in that area we'd have a stronger desire than most areas for mixed use as much. I think if, I think we can hold ourselves a little bit more flexible along that strip from Bridgeport to King Street. So it's, to me, it's kind of a more flexible development, but at the same time, contained from a standpoint of elevation and number of units. And if we stick with the number of units we just talked about today, I think we'll be, I think we'll be fine.
Sounds good.
Just to clarify, just doing Barnum overlay? 36 miles. Lots of, lots of work.
Question, Jay, would that be harder than like Honey Spot Road and Stratford Ave and the other major thoroughfares? Imagine Barnum is like the most loaded street we have.
Well, is it going to be more difficult? Hard to say. I don't think, I don't think it'll necessarily be more difficult. I think there's just more components to consider because, I mean, the key is really defining the boundary. I mean, you're going property line by property line.
Yeah, it's much more.
From Bridgeport to Main Street. It's a lot. It's just a lot of work. I think it's the most important one to do for Honey Spa or Lordship.
Well, I'd recommend just one or two property lines back. Keep it pretty well-contained, the Barnum. Just because of what's around it. It's very much embedded as a street in this. Like Honey Spa Road, there is some distance between many residential units, so it's a little easier to have higher, more intense use on Honey Spa Road than it is.
There's going to be lots of discussion about it. Best practice is try to alleviate the 70 strip zoning, 100-foot zoning on Barnum. That's what's going to be tough in town. Overlay should really extend the street open so that if at any point that actually decides to really develop like.
Oh, yeah, you get backstreet alleviation.
But it doesn't kick out the residential homes that are there either, so. I think there's going to be a lot more discussion once you kind of start to propose best practice.
I really do like the Campbell Ave kind of layout, what was, even did. You have a lot of different mixed use and diversified use. And they do have like, they do have parallel streets that run behind them too, which actually does a lot to alleviate traffic. Just it gives people another way to kind of negotiate the blocks.
What's the name of the street?
Campbell Ave, West Haven.
That's in West Haven.
Yeah. It's, if you ever up that way, it's 43.
Madam Chair? I wanted to ask Jay, as you compare Barnum Avenue, as much as I'd like to see that area, of course, blossom more, but we've got like a mini anchor sitting there on Stratford Avenue along two roads. And as you compare Stratford Avenue as an overlay versus Barnum Avenue, which one offers the best opportunity from your opinion?
Well, I think Barnum Avenue is just set up more because you've got the major regional bus line that runs through there, and that's just, it's such an attractive thing to developers, to be on a bus line. And not only, not in terms of residential, I mean, that certainly is the case, but providing doctor's offices, grocery store, everything that someone who doesn't have a car would want access to. So I just think Barnum Ave is set up a little, a little better. And I think Stratford, Stratford Ave by two roads, I think that's still kind of figuring out its own identity there.
But it's, it's got a lot of traffic over there now.
Sure.
And it's an attractive neighborhood, in a sense.
Okay. Mr. Giuliano?
But, you know, that's a great loop. It could be called something loop, because if you go Barnum Ave and cut across Bruce, I mean, you go right by, uh, a few blocks away from a couple of good eateries there, and then you cut right up Stratford Ave to two roads to Pizza Co., and then back around to, uh, Hard's Corner, or cut across, uh, that side street there. I mean, that's a great loop. It could almost be like the, uh, the nautical loop that they do with trawlers, these people that got those boats, and they start off and go through the Erie Canal and go around through Florida and back around.
Yeah.
Go ahead and laugh, but that's what they call it. That's what we could do.
Mr. Fuller?
I just want to put it out there that Barnum Ave overlay and redevelopment was the reason why I ran for its office in the first place.